This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call the Anderson County Employee Insurance Board of Trustees meeting to order in accordance with Governor Lee's executive order regarding the limiting of gatherings to prevent the further spread of COVID-19. This meeting will be conducted with some members participating electronically. For roll call for members of the committee, let's go ahead and get that recorded. Commissioner Meredith?
Here.
Robbie Holdbrook?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Terri's here, and Tyler?
I'm here.
Oh, you are? Okay, good. All right, we have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from June 2nd. Kim distributed those by email. If we can get a motion to approve.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Meredith.
Any questions or changes? Terri, none? If it's acceptable to committee, we will, unless there's objection, we will consider the minutes approved with that first and second. Okay, hearing no objection, the minutes are approved. The next items up for discussion, the Director's Report.
In the initial invite that I sent out to everyone, there was my documents that I was going to talk about today. The first one is the 2019-20 Anderson County Benefits Financial and Contract Summary Report. I'm not going to go into every line item on this. I'm just going to kind of summarize. If you all would like to hold on to these and possibly bring them back or reach out if you have questions, I don't want to go through all three pages. It's a lot of data to take in. So, one good thing is Fund 263 did not receive any additional appropriations from the legislative body during the 2019-20 fiscal year. Claims are projected to remain on the rise for the 2021 fiscal year. The fund received $79,152 in rebates and refunds from the soft loss and prescription vendors. The 2019-20 fiscal year, the HR department managed 25 employee benefits. That's seven of them from prior years. Our office enrolls, reconciles missed payments to the Finance Department, and most importantly, facilitates resolution for an estimated 450 Anderson County government employees and their families. Among those 25 benefits, 15 are supplemental, employee-paid voluntary benefits. There are five departmental budgeted self-build benefits that include live, short-term disability, dental, TCRS. Those are employee and employer contributions that total around 1.5 million with TCRS at 1.2 out of that 1.5 million. There are five budgeted employer-employee paid benefits that runs through Fund 263. The one I want to hit on is the Thrive Health and Wellness Center because that still remains the most popular benefit we have to our employees. Since inception of March of 2016, the Thrive Health and Wellness Center through June of 2020, the county has seen a savings of 1.7 million, less the initial 120,000 for contribution as well as the productivity were right at 1 million. Eighty percent of the employees and their families use the clinic. Those employees have realized the savings since inception as $292,865. So that's money that actually is staying in employees' pockets. The breakdown on the rebates, $52,125 from our soft loss carrier for being good stewards of our health and prescription benefits, almost $17,000 from our RX vendor Ventegra, and $58,665 in rebates from our prior RX vendor. That's really all I was going to say about that unless someone has any questions specifically on that handout. Okay. So the next one is the colored report. It's in an Excel. That is your fiscal year aggregate report. So it breaks it down by emergency room, excess claims, prescription claims, and then it goes down to the Thrive Health and Wellness Center, the three graphs there, and then incentive data. So, the top one on the emergency rooms, the thing I want to draw your attention to for the 2019-20 year, we had 98 total member visits, which is a pretty good increase on what the county pays, which is 123,000. And from what I'm seeing, that's, a lot of that is in relation to med bins, low saving percentage that we knew that was going to hit us. So I think that's where some of that is. In regards to the excess claims, the thing I want to draw your attention to is we spent 1.6 million out in excess claims that ranges anywhere from 25,000 to 100,000. And remember, this year we have that aggregate amount that's going to be added to that. The prescription claims, there was a substantial increase in 2019-20 in total prescription fills. Not so much hardly on the cost, but the increase in number. When you drop down to the Thrive Health and Wellness Center, there is a small increase in prescriptions, but the biggest increase was prior year, which was because we went to a prescription deductible. The spending, even though we've seen an increase, the spending is still relatively low for the Thrive Health and Wellness Center claim cost for the 2019-20 year. The office visits have stayed relatively the same. The one thing I want to point out is the no-shows almost doubled from prior year. So, we may, if that continues, we may want to look at what we're charging. I think you get one free no-show after that, it's a $10 fee if you have a no-show, so we may want to look at that again. The offsite visits per, it's via CareHere, which is the Kroger's Little Clinic and now the telehealth. They don't print those out, but those are on an annual basis, so I don't have the 2020 numbers yet. I did add the telehealth that had four visits in the July and August. I've got a report on that late last night, and it is up to last month, it was 10 visits. So people are utilizing the telehealth. Hopefully, in the first quarter, we'll have a good breakdown and a report that we can possibly share. The incentive data for the 2019-20 year, there's 67 participants of the tobacco cessation. Cost to 62 members was $18,628. Those, that's the folks that decided they didn't want to do the education portion and just pay the $25. 2019-20, the $25 HRA, we had 197 participants, and it cost the fund almost $60,000. Does anybody have any questions on that report? So, one thing I want to just briefly touch on, I sent out an email earlier this year in regards to premise health purchasing CareHere. And speaking with Ben Baker, I'm sure you all remember him, he's the one that delivers the overall savings that we've received. I spoke to him, and he has ensured us that there would be no changes in structure or personnel. There would be a rebranding of CareHere a premise health company, that RE and Ben would continue to run CareHere just like it has. He said that currently CareHere offers seven products, and this new company offers 30. So they're hoping to see an increase in areas such as dental vision, fitness management, and other options. So just keeping you up to date on that, and we'll follow it. Anytime we see any changes, I'll let you know. Do you have questions on that? All right, right quick to the wellness program. The only department head that got back to me in regards to the fitness center was the Sheriff's Office, and Tyler shared that with me. The most concerning of the numbers, I mean, there's 36 people, 36% of the members already have a membership, 91% of them said that they would participate if the county opened any type of wellness gym, pop area, and that 81% of those would cancel theirs and use the counties, but 74% of them want to see it in Clinton. And 92% of them wanted to see it 24/7, and I just don't believe that we have that ability in Clinton right now. That doesn't mean we're going to quit working on it, I just don't know with the short timeframe that we have to use that wellness funding, that this is going to be an option. Does this board have any thoughts on that? Okay, so, I wanted to get your all's input on the wellness section. You know, we've got 25,000 that was set aside from Blue Cross Blue Shield, strictly for wellness, been working on that. And we started the wellness program, most of you I'm sure have seen that, and with that program, it's getting the employees moving, eating healthier. There's all kinds of different things that they can do to participate, even if you go get a flu shot that allows you to build points. With that, there's going to be drawings and winnings and even participation gifts. So it's, it's a really good program. It's estimated that's going to run around $5,000. That still leaves us the 20,000. And with the gym, onsite gym location not being available, we spoke to CBiz, they have a specialist, her name is Addie Stevens, and she reached out, we had some conversations. She sent us some really good information and some different type programs that can be offered. And I guess I'm looking for guidance from this board on how you would like to see this office, HR, work through the process of trying to find a wellness program that we can implement in a timely manner to ensure that if we don't lose that money, if we don't use that money by June 30th, we're going to lose it. It's $20,000, and I don't, I'm not about, just about let that happen. That's just thrown away. So, I guess, I'd like to know how you all would like me to move forward on looking into some of the ideas that's being presented. One of the ideas is a vending machine, a healthy vending machine, and that's getting a lot of input from the employees that's positive. However, that doesn't cost us anything. The people I've talked to, they'll bring in the vending machines and they'll set those up, and then whatever sales, they get back the sales from that, and you know, we don't pay anything for that. So that's something that we're working with Catherine on. And we'd actually tried to work on it a couple of years ago, but our current vendor, I think it's Davis Vendors, is that right? I'm not even sure. There's no contract, there's never a bid. I'm not sure how they ended up in the county, and maybe some of you all have some insights there? No?
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure.
I looked into that, Kim, years ago, and Pam and I looked into it, and there is some kind of law, it's a vendor for the blind, the proceeds go there, and then there's some kind of, I don't want to be quoted on this because I can't remember exactly, it's been probably six years since we looked at this. Basically, they're given first opportunity, and they, it's something covered under statute where if they don't want to be a vendor here, then we would go out, we would do a bid and all of that, but they do choose to, to continue to serve the courthouse. So that's, I don't remember all the details, I could probably go dig that file up, but we were looking at the very same thing because we thought, how, how did they get here? Who are these people? We just kind of see them in the hall. But that's my understanding. And I think Tyler, I think there might be something similar at the jail on, I don't know if you had their vending machines there too back in the day, or you still do, but it does have something to do with the blind being an operation associated with them.
Yeah, that's right. On the, our commissary is the blind vendor, it's through that. So, I don't have a lot of information on it, I just know that that's how it was set up when we got here, and nothing's changed.
Well, Kim, are there some, you know, programs that have a lot of participation in other counties or cities or organizations, you know, something that is quickly stood up and is popular?
That's part of what we've been working on, but to go back, before we move on from the vendor, Catherine, are you on the call?
I am. And, well, he's not a blind vendor. I mean, that's just, I don't know if it's changed since when you and, when the mayor and Pam and I looked into it, but when we met with him, he confirmed that he is, he's not part of that program. And from what I understand, it's, they do have the right of first refusal, but I, I don't, I think I spoke with, maybe it was Jay, I'm not sure, but from what I understand, there isn't a big interest in this area from those that are certified as the blind vendors, but we can definitely look into that again.
Mayor, this is Rick. You might want to check with David Stewart. He was the county attorney back in the 70s when we actually got Hazel, who was a blind lens that ran a concession up on the second floor.
Okay.
He was there, she didn't keep, don't quote product, give her the wrong money, she knew that. And she stayed, she was here, I know when I was elected in 1990, she was still here. But I don't, there is some kind of deal with statutory where eventually she passed away, and they somehow did away with it. That would be the only person I think might know the history of that.
Okay.
So that's the one thing that, that we're getting good feedback on from the employees, is they would like to have a cold vending machine, something that works off of a debit card rather than cash, those type things. You know, several of us come in in the morning and we don't leave until that night, and so having a machine here that's accessible to the employees to use that's got healthy food. Catherine and I spoke to the gentleman that has the machines here now, and he wasn't interested in providing us with a machine or with healthy food over a year ago. And so, you know, if he's not producing what we need, and then we're getting some complaints about the snacks in the machines as well. They're out of date, we had someone get a snack that was molded, so things like that is a concern as well. So I guess some guidance on how we need to handle that.
Can we not purchase the machine and have them fill it?
No. You mean like, can he not go purchase the machine?
No, not anymore.
The county? I don't, I don't.
Don't give a dust for purchasing a machine. I'm trying to do all good with that, but without that, why can't we purchase the machine?
We probably should. Catherine, did you hear Rick?
No, not quite. What was the question?
Rick has said that what's stopping the county from purchasing the machine and then we just hire a vendor to come in and fill it for us? Is that something we can check on with the gentleman that we spoke to earlier today as well?
I mean, I'm sure he, we, I'm not sure if that's an option, I don't know if that's how it works, but we can look into it. With the vendor currently providing just the machine free of charge, I'm not sure what the, the value would be in us owning it, but we could certainly, I mean, we could, we could buy one, we'd have to put a bid out probably because of the price that I.
Okay, what were you saying, Rick?
Well, I'm not talking about asking the guy, Mary.
Yeah.
I'm saying that you haven't actually owned the machine. Part of the stock.
Okay.
That's what I was asking.
And then we could do an RFP probably for the stocking side of it.
That's true.
Okay. So we'll check on that side of it as well. Mayor, to what you were saying, the other ideas that was given to the HR team from the CBiz Wellness Specialist was audit and enhance break areas, a creation of a zen room, enhancement to new mother rooms, cafeterias, that's one thing I want to talk about. Statute, there's statutes that speak to a new mother's room, and what we have to have available for new mothers, and what we can't do. So, creating a zen room, and Mayor, you and I had talked about that, to where employees could just go and plug, it would also could be used for a new mother's room, that was one thing that was, was thrown out there. And then a wellbeing catalog, where you would create a catalog with similar items, and you would allow all the employees to purchase something out of it. Now, I don't know that Blue Cross Blue Shield would support that, because their thing is with this wellness program is they got to do something to get something, and that's just being an employee of Anderson County, I don't know if that would generate that need. With the, the different items, one of the things that we talked about, and we talked about it in the HR Advisory Committee meeting, is maybe have this spring a walking event where people, offices kind of you, you're challenged against each other, to where how many miles, how many steps did you walk type thing? To where if we done something like that, every office might get a fruit, a fruit or a snack box that you could deliver to them, but then the winning office also got a free lunch. You do something like that. So there's options like that available as well. That. We have till June. So, it would be really hard to put that together. Yeah, and they did talk about a virtual wellbeing fair, and that would run about $5,500, and where the employees would log on, and you would do like an event fair from your computer. So that is an option, that if you all think that you would like for me to look into that.
Personally, Ben, I mean, if you're a wellness program, we have a hard time getting people to sign up for a, interesting people.
A virtual?
Yeah. Maybe I'll be. How many do we have signed up for the wellness program?
Eighteen or twenty?
About four hundred.
It is hard to get buy-in, and so that's, to get the employees to participate, it's really challenging at times. And that's why I was looking more towards the vending machine and a zen room, because those are ways that you can spend the money, and it's there if they want to use it. Anybody have any other thoughts? Ideas?
Kim, my brain is fried after commission meeting last night, so usually we're, would it be a wellness board that went to quarterly meetings instead of monthly? I'm sorry, I know I'm not providing a lot of feedback myself, but is it possible for you to maybe kind of send a list to the members, and then, you know, maybe we just kind of all provide you some feedback as we have time to kind of, and, and maybe you just run, I mean, we don't need an official vote, do we? Or do we?
That was the next thing. If you all would like for me to communicate with you via email, you all provide me with feedback on what your likes and dislikes are, what your thoughts are, then I can come back with an overall, this is where everybody stood, and this is what I'm moving forward with, and then give you all a few days, and that way we don't have to have a meeting to help, because I'm, I'm concerned about spending of the money.
Right.
Obviously. Would that be all right with everybody?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, all right, everybody's good with that. So that's what I'll do. One of the vendors we met with this morning is supposed to get his prices this afternoon. I had one vendor email right before I left, so I'm going to reach back out to them and check on the pricing there. So I'll, it'll probably be next week, you can expect an email from me, okay? Okay. That's all I have. Mayor, that concludes my portion of the HR Director's Report.
Okay, are you handling, who's handling the benefit contract status?
Well, I included that in my package. I have CBiz on the line to also speak about this.
That was the sheet with all of the dates on it and the RFPs and all of that? Okay.
So the goal is to get to where we don't have to do an RFP every year, and when we do, we're not bidding out all of our products, because that was a lot in prior years. It was a lot for HR, it was a lot for finance, it was a whole lot for Catherine, a lot for CBiz, so maybe step back from that this year. You know, one of the things that the employees have asked for is goodie of plans to where maybe this year, we take a break. You know, soft loss or reinsurance is always looked at on an annual basis, so removing that from the equation, because that's always going to be done annually, but maybe removing the RFP services for the upcoming good quarters, and focus on shoring up our medical insurance premiums and a plan while also looking into maybe adding a silver plan. That would be maybe a high deductible health plan, and my hope would be that the employee-only portion would have a zero premium for the employee. Now, it would be a high deductible health plan, but we have several staff members who purchase the silver and say, I still never used it, but they want to have it in case something bad happens, and that's what a high deductible health plan would do for them. And so I guess, CBiz is on the line to speak to this, but my request would be that we don't, we don't do RFPs this year, starting back maybe in the 2022, 2023 year. You know, moving those out to where we're not looking at all of them at the same time, taking them, you know, two or three at a time. The year that we do vision, medical, and prescription is, would be a rough year, but moving everything else away from that and breaking it out.
And this is Carrie from CBiz. I completely agree with that as well, Kim, just in terms of, you know, just establishing a, a good relationship with these carrier partners. I mean, certainly if there's any sort of issues or anything like that, I mean, we certainly want to reevaluate your carrier partners at that point, but I also think there's something to be said with, you know, developing that, you know, continuity with a particular carrier so that you can establish strategies that's going, that will work effectively for your group, specifically for medical and prescription coverage. I mean, dental, and those types of things are easy enough in terms of administration, but for medical and prescription, especially with it being a self-funded plan, if we're going to look at any type of cost savings measures or things like that, we need some time underneath our belts to see if those programs that we've implemented have been successful and, and things like that. So not quoting it out every year helps us to get better pricing, helps those carriers to be a bit more aggressive in terms of their administrative fees, and they're much more willing to kind of just really work with us when they see that it's going to be, you know, kind of an established relationship versus something that we're going to have to, to rebid every year. Certainly pending any problems, we of course would do that, but if things are going okay and working fairly well, I think it's a better kind of sell to your employees too, to be able to have that continuity. to be able to have that continuity of care.
How do you feel, Rick? Just a discussion, and Catherine's on the phone as well. That way, it gives her insight on what she needs to prepare for, for the upcoming year.
So, this would, this would take us through 2021?
This would take us through 2022.
When you would expire in 2023?
So, what we would do is the plans that we currently have in place, the one-year contract, we would renew those for another year. And then in January of 2022, we would start the bidding for whichever one, if we wanted to start one by then. We could, yes. That's as early as we could do it, yeah.
That's perfect.
Robbie, what do you think about not having RFPs this year and just sticking with what we got and? Okay. True.
Yeah, I mean, I'm
So, just to clarify, Kim, we're talking about authorizing you to extend contracts for one additional year for Delta Dental, US Able, Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision, Flex US Able, Care Here On-Site Clinic, CBiz as the consultant, Medical Blue Cross Blue Shield. Are the prescription benefits, it has a different date, but would that be part of this as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And then US Able ancillary benefits. So, it would be authorizing you to extend all of those contracts by one additional year?
Yeah.
That's the motion you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, well, do a roll call. Commissioner Meredith? Robbie?
Yeah.
Kim?
Yes.
And Tyler? And Tyler Mace? He must have stepped. Oh, that's okay.
I had it on mute. It's a yes.
Okay. All right, the motion passes. And Kim, I think my own personal view, my own two cents is, I see what you're saying about multi-year, but how about we start with the one year and then we, I know we've gone through so many changes recently and we just make sure, as Carrie said, I think the goal is, yes, to build relationships, but let's also let's also not lock ourselves into waiting three years to do RFP. But that's just my two cents, and I'm only one member of this board, so.
No, I completely agree. The summary that I have down below, that's just, that's just me showing that if I was looking at it from the HR standpoint, how I would divide those up and based upon the year that they need to be renewed, what that would look like. But at any time that we felt like we had a problem with one of our vendors, we could always change that.
Right.
So, I wouldn't suggest that we change anything else, but just hold steady for a year. That was the biggest thing.
One question I did have on your report, Kim, you mentioned at the beginning that the claims are projected to remain on the rise for this year. So, I know one of, one of the issues we did discover with Medbin was that we apparently had some Blue Cross Blue Shield situations, I guess, or claims where it was not that it was paid. We never did really fully measure, you know, what that was, what that impact was. But the Blue Cross Blue Shield, we discussed that with them, and I think we were going to keep an eye on that and if we ever needed to trigger maybe kind of a sample audit of claims or something. Are we looking at that as well as this claims projected, the projection? Is this based on some actual, we're just having a lot of issues? Or are we monitoring for the claims against the plan? What can you tell us?
So, the projection of the increase in cost is what we're seeing on the excessive claim side. We have So, we've already had three members hit stock loss this year and possibly a total of six by year end. And if that happens, that's going to be, that's going to be a big hit. You know, what we're seeing is we've got some pretty sick folks again, and that is unrelated to COVID in any way. And that's what we're seeing, so I expect to see quite a bit of increase on that.
Thank you, Kim.
Welcome.
Madam Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
This is Tyler. I probably should have asked this before I voted, but being the new guy, I'm going to make sure I'm on the right track here. When we're vote, when we're talking about vendors, we're not necessarily specifically talking about the plan that we have, is actually like the benefits we have, we're just talking about who we're using to manage those. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm not voting yes to keep the same exact plan for three years.
Yeah, well, the motion was actually for one year. So, what we normally Tyler is, and we've had a lot of RFP over the last little window of time. And so, what they have to do is just given the nature of dealing with healthcare, it's not like a construction project where we can throw something up for two weeks to put concrete down. It takes a little bit longer for Catherine and HR and CBiz, our consultants, to draft them. So, usually it's a process that'll start in January. And so, we're just, what we just voted to authorize was, don't worry, don't start the process, let's go ahead. And that was built into those contracts, those options to renew. So, what we're saying is we're not going to go to RFP. We intend to renew the contracts with them. Now, if there are concerns you have about the medical plan, certainly bring those up. Go ahead and bring that up right now, and we've got our consultants on the phone and we can talk about that for any changes that we might want to look at.
Okay, I don't have any, I mean, again, just trying to wrap it all, you know, soak it all in right now, but I just wanted to make sure that there will be a time and a place, if there are any issues, that we can, we can discuss those.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, that kind of leads me, this is Kim again. That kind of leads me into the next thing I would like to talk to you about in regards to the plan base. We even talked about it last year. At this year, taking a hard look at the plans that we have in place, shoring those up and adding that additional silver, that would give us a better options for our employees. Now, that doesn't, I'm not asking that we go ahead and put something like that in place. Obviously, it's going to take, I think CBiz, when I spoke with them live, Tom, they're to do something like this, they would need at least six months of data, so that's going to take us through December. Then it would have to be turned over to the actuaries and then they'll come back and present something to us if we are interested in shoring up just the medical side of things, medical and RX. So, that's what I would like to see happen. We've talked before, I'm really concerned about the maximum out-of-pocket that we have on an out-of-network. It's crazy what that would be for our staff. Our staff don't make that kind of money. I know Commissioner Fritz asked us for the upcoming year to look at the deductible, and I'm fine with that, and that does look high at the onset of something. But if you're, how we're seeing a lot of our employees be really sick, that maximum out-of-pocket could bankrupt them. So, that's my concern as well. So, I'd like to take all those things and put them together, any of the ideas that we have in those to CBiz and let their actuaries work something out, us come back, you know, maybe in February and take a look at it to see if we want to change it come July 1. That would be my recommendation.
Come back in February with that, Kim, with some?
It would probably take that long. I mean, it's going to be mid-January before we would get there. And then the actuarial team will probably need a month. So, we're looking at probably the end of February, first week of March before we could come back and discuss that. And I would like to have the information ahead of time for the board to have it. So, when we do come back together, that decision can be made. Or, you know, maybe have that opportunity to reach out and ask the questions, so CBiz would be ready.
Right. And that would be good. Maybe we even do just, you know, not a dedicated meeting, maybe just a workshop. And that way, there's no pressure. We can bat around the ideas a little bit and then come back for an official meeting.
That works.
Carrie, did you have something you wanted to chime in there? Or maybe that's I saw, okay, I'm sorry.
No, just necessarily, I mean, just really kind of what Kim had said. In order for our actuaries to give us some good funding numbers for those, so basically what they do is they'll look at your current funding arrangement in terms of how much you're accruing for each plan. And then they will give us specific decrement in terms of if you wanted to change the deductible, if you wanted to change the out-of-pocket maximum, and how you can adjust those funding factors, also based on the plan's performance. Because we changed to a new vendor for July 1, we would, they would like to have six months' worth of claims data just to see how the current funding factors are running, making sure that none of that needs to be adjusted without considering any type of plan changes. So, they'll want to look to make sure that those numbers have performed to be accurate. And then we can apply any decremental changes in terms of plan enhancements or changes in plan, offering additional plans and things like that. So, just like Kim said, we'll have that information around mid-January. Then they'll need, you know, about three or four weeks to look through all that, answering questions. So, end of February, March timeframe. But still, that if we are all in agreement in remaining with the same carriers, that still gives us a good amount of time in terms of communicating that for July 1 renewal date. We would still have plenty of time there.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Anything else on that, Kim?
No, I know Rick said he was in favor of that. Robbie, I just would like, I guess, yours and Tyler's input, if you all would like to see that. That way, we can turn CBiz loose, let them know what we're preparing for. And if you have any specific ideas that you would like to see, other than what I've already mentioned in the upcoming plan that CBiz brings back, please share that with them.
Okay. Fund 263 reserve policy.
That's Robbie.
Okay, yeah. We actually started talking about this on the fund balance policy, and we actually have a reserve now. I have a 263 fund reserve or unrestricted balance at seven hundred and nineteen thousand eight ninety-three. And I don't know if we're ready to establish a fund balance policy, a fund balance policy in 263, but I think it's I mean, our fund balance policy for general fund is two months of all three expenses. I can pull an example of, that I found where they do two months' worth of claims. And I know two months' worth of claims for our 300, those would be six hundred and twenty-four thousand five fifty. If we based it on what we spent last year, it'd be five hundred and twelve thousand five fifteen. I mean, it's a nonpolicy to have. And how we want to handle it if we get lower than that, just another issue that we, we address. We could have a fund balance policy. That's what in our Yeah, we've got to decide what's wrong. So, is a high community appropriate? I think that, yeah. I mean, if we get below that, I mean, I know we could also look at, you know, you might have to raise.
Even our resolution speaks to if we fall, it's not fall below fund balance, if we don't have funding, that county commission has the ability to help fund that. So, we might want to incorporate some of that language into this because it's already in place. That would be one option, but.
We could also do, we used to do a weekly for the two of them, funding them every year. And we could do, I mean, if we fell below this fund balance, that's something we could probably, you know, we could do a weekly to recoup the money, which I think is a good idea. It doesn't really affect employee premiums. That's nice, or maybe you have to raise those if we need to. But I, basically, we could get some ideas, we could write a policy, Randy did, and we could bring it back next month or next meeting and possibly get a raise of what you all are impressed with. If at all. I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what your motion was.
I just made an emotion to do the fund policy for a high community dollars and let them bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay, okay. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tyler. A further discussion? I do, and maybe Carrie or Seamus, do you all have sample policies that other organizations you serve have? Have you, as far as the verbiage or, I mean, if we're talking about what Randy and Robbie are going to put together, I mean, for instance, I would think that I chatted a little bit with Robbie about this, that we don't want to go below that fund balance. So, if we're, you know, looking at setting rates for the employees, we want to make sure that we don't balance the plan, if you will, using that fund balance. So, in that regard, kind of like the state law requirement for your schools, they're required, they are required to maintain a certain percentage that they're really, you know, they get dinged if they go below that. And that's just because of the nature of claims themselves. We don't want to be in that position, but maybe that's too strict of a thought process on that. But Seamus, Carrie, I don't know if either one of you have any thoughts on that or on a policy?
I don't have any thoughts right off, Mayor. However, we do work with several other municipalities, and if it would be helpful, you know, let our team kind of get together for our heads together and see if we can share some common language that other clients of ours have used. And get that back to you guys, if that would be all right. I don't have anything off the top of my head here in front of me, but we'd be happy to research that for you guys.
That would be very helpful. I'm sure, I see Randy nodding his head, so that is a, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, so we have any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. We'll call the roll. Commissioner Meredith? Robbie? Kim?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. And last item on the agenda. All right. Motion carries. And last item on the agenda is the retirement benefit funding.
I put this on the agenda for discussion mainly because I know back in the day, we had a, if you were here 30 years, we have some employees that still on that. We pay their, they pay as much as the employee pays, but we don't pay the accounting portion for COVID. So now we allow employees that figure 30 years right to him, that's, they put up $2,800 a month. And we haven't actually ever had employees because this year we have them now. Like I said, and Randy, we don't really fund that. It's just been about the 263 fund. And I'm, if I'm honest, I thought our C-Biz employee never actually even did our insurance. I don't think that matters, but it gives it. And I'm just, I was thinking if we had several these employees that were qualified for this, that were on it, then you could do that and take a hit. So I just think that we passed that, but we really never had discussions because we've never had anybody, you know, qualified like how we did.
Some of the discussions we've had in prior meetings is, and that probably went to this plan. And what we have, we have two things that's being taken, that's taking place right now. We have four or five employees, I think four, that we are to pay $350 for their premiums on a monthly basis, and they get to stay on Anderson County Government's health plan. What we've seen was, is that they were costing, it's costing a lot of money. We weren't funding it anywhere. That $350 that was supposed to be being paid by the county for the premiums never comes from anywhere. And so the fund was just absorbing all of that cost. So what we done, so Tyler knows as well, the Board of Trustees voted effective December 31st of 2018 to establish a health reimbursement for eligible employees. You have to be pre-age 65, and you have to have 30 years of service or more with Anderson County Government. And if you fit that, then you can get an $1,800 per month reimbursement for premiums and medical costs. Eight hundred. What did I say? I'm sorry, 800. Eight hundred per month, yeah. So what we're looking at is that there's still no, the fund is still absorbing all of that cost. Not only that, to get a health reimbursement, we went with TAF, they handle our flex, they're handling the reimbursement, because there's IRS things that drive that as well, that has to be checked. When we put this in place, we said, hey, we'd just deal with it if it ever happened. Well, it happened. And there we were, and we just went, the discussion prior to, was we would just go with NAA, who was our flex carrier then. So we just went with TAF, who is our flex carrier now. And they're the one that's handling it, and that's a $25 admin fee for every employee that utilizes it that the fund also is absorbing. Yeah. There's a $300 annual. No, that's, and that is. So what it is, is you have to have a plan that the IRS says that we have to have a plan that is approved and goes by any guidelines the IRS has put in place for that fiscal year that meets those requirements. So every year, you have to have that looked at, whether it's TAF for a flex and HRA, they both have to have them. Yes. And so what we're looking at is, we never addressed it, and that's what Robbie's question is, since we didn't address it, do we want to put any stipulations on there that you only get this benefit if you have the plan, or is this just a retirement benefit that we leave as is? And the other is, how do we fund that? So let's say that Stephanie's that retired person, does that $800 come out of the HR fund? Because the HR fund has money set aside if she had a benefit. Then, yeah, it would already be budgeted. So it would be taken out of HR's budget to pay that as long as she has that. A lot of your departments that are bigger, it wouldn't really matter, but for smaller departments like ours, veterans, tides, whatever, well, you got a smaller one. If that employee didn't have a benefit, and you only got two employees, then that fund's not going to have money for it. And there's going to have to be money coming from somewhere. So it's determining the funding mechanism that's going to happen. And also, do we want to change the wording to say that they have to have coverage prior to, or is it just a retirement benefit? There wasn't stipulation on prior year other. Let me say that.
Well, if we can, if we know the employee, which I know that the department, we can budget that in any, at the beginning of the budget season, in any department.
True.
But that's, I mean, I just, those are just confirmed, I, when I take the money, and it makes it a part of it, that we can, but I thought we had an earlier discussion about this. We were going to, I thought we were going to grant pause of those. We did.
We did. So they're still seeing what it's.
We were going to go more to HSA, something like that. That is more of a retirement, which is the right place. The question I get is, is why can't it be 30 years of combined service? Because people need to come back, and they need to be on the plan.
So it doesn't say continual service. It can be combined. Right now, the way it reads, it can be combined. It just says 30 years or more of service with the county.
I thought you said combined, I do with county, it is somewhere.
Oh, no. They have to be with Anderson County 30 years. TCRF. Yes.
Been over here, and I come in here, I've got it combined 30 years of TCRF, and now I'm going to retire. Is there something, do they know about these? It's like I said. But I thought we had a discussion about that with HSA.
I'm sorry, is it the HR? Yeah, we do have that.
That's what I'm saying, we're doing that now for the bowling, which came up just this year. So.
It's how are we going to fund it?
We just had a lot of questions.
We figured all that out, except for the funding mechanism.
See, we're not really funding everyone for the grandfathers immediately. We thought our succession is, which our 263 fund is honestly healthy now for the, you know, the hacking, if you're going to have for two years. So, but isn't it, it could, I think, it could.
Does that think you got to speak for them, two, three years?
Well, I'm going to, I have one right now. I mean, I have three people now.
If I'm going, they're asking about combined service. That's the big question.
Do we have to offer, do we even have to offer something like that?
Retirement? No, we do not have to offer. No, it doesn't have to be, yes. It's not a requirement.
But let's see, would it require, and again, I'm going to go, Rick just mentioned this, Carrie, Seamus, do you see other municipalities or counties offering this as a continuing benefit? And if we chose to change it, would we recommend, like, setting it into the future, like, three years from now, or two years from now, or maybe even if we want to keep it as a benefit, I mean, maybe 35 years of service? I mean, I don't know.
So what I, I don't, I don't know that, Seamus, you may have different experience. I haven't seen this particular policy where they set aside a monetary amount for someone to use for their medical insurance coverage for an early retiree based on years of service. Now, other municipalities that I have give employees the opportunity to continue their coverage as an early retiree. So if they have retired based on years of service and not based on age, then they can stay on the active policy like a regular employee until they reach age 65. And so they would just continue to pay their portion of the premium to the county. I have not, though, seen just, you know, kind of a monetary incentive given to, like, let's say, for example, like we have going on right now, that the member has access to coverage somewhere else, and they're just using that, those funds to help cover that cost. I have not, I have not seen that particular policy set up with any other municipalities that I work with.
Is it something, and Carrie, we actually did this with our prior consultant, because as Kim said at the beginning of this conversation, we were really experiencing a lot of claims. And so we were trying to figure out a way to mitigate some of that financial impact. And we were told that this was a legal, that this was a legal way, this would allow them to either, if they wanted, to go out and purchase on the market. And what we did was we got some quotes, you know, where that individual could go purchase on the market, and we based our amount on that particular cost. And so that's how we were able to do that.
Definitely. And I think that that, yes, absolutely. And I think that there's, I don't see any issues with that in terms of, like, compliance. And I can certainly see, like, the rationale behind it in terms of the dollar figure anticipated to be less than maybe what that particular member would have for claims. So an $800 a month benefit that you're providing would, on the whole, possibly be less expensive than what that particular member could incur in claims. I completely understand the logic and the thinking behind that. It's just, it's not something that I'm seeing with others. I do see more of just the continuation of the, of the current policy. But I do think it is more of a cost savings measure, because usually that, that is going to be where you experience a significant number of claims or experience high-cost claims.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have nothing to add other than what Carrie has said. It's a very unusual and benevolent policy, for sure. But also, on the other hand, I can certainly follow the logic behind it, and how those people typically would be your higher cost claimants. And the amount that you're putting aside in the account would probably be significantly less than, potentially less than what they would generate in claims. And, yeah, I also don't see any compliance issues in offering. But unfortunately, I don't have, as Carrie said, I also don't have any experience with it, so really don't know how to measure it versus what other clients of ours are doing.
Mm-hmm.
But it's a good benefit.
Any other discussion? I mean, do we want to maybe talk to some of the other, maybe, Rick, talk to some other county commissioners? Is it something, if we're not required to do it, is it something that we want to revisit or alter, amend? I mean, I don't know if we've, I mean, I think it was put in place as a way to reward.
I remember that. Yeah, it was, I think it was intended for everybody to say. And I was telling Robbie now what's happening, is that C-Biz, they think, oh man, I worked for the city plan, I've been to the state, I've come back, I got to start all over. We're running into, we're doing it for those, but I've got a mixed bag here. Because we've had turnover, we've had people come from other, that's why I was saying, the TCRF side, you say, okay, you've been in TCRF for 30 years, what am I, we've been, we've got all the X, but it's each side of the cost claim thing. What I was thinking, the benefit was, once you leave pre-65, I could have made change under 60 to 64, just offer the benefits to the HR, that then pay that as an offer, not us pay. That's, the feedback I'm getting from employees is, they know that, and they, and they have a mixed bag of service for 30, and they're going to reset 30 years. And it's like, we offered this benefit once, and it's only for eight people, and most take it at age 10. If that's not what I'm hearing, so why can't we get offered something, I mean, we retired with 30 years of TCRF. I don't know. But I think you just have to run the numbers, around how many people that is. Well, I'm not, and I think that, maybe we should just continue this discussion next time, saying how we found it, if we want to find it, if, probably we learned it from our employees.
How are we going to?
Definitely not them. I mean, if you're not choosing, whatever, the black market, whatever that number is, they have to do, we've had a very good.
We can look in the left.
It's an offer, I mean, they're going to take it. At least you're, you've got a way up to the night, you need a hot, I guess what I'm saying, a higher version, it works down.
I can also check with some of our other municipal clients, because that, that does raise a very interesting question in terms of having a break in their service. I haven't had that question come up before, in terms of, is there, you know, a reset of that? Is it 30 years of continuous service? Or, and so I'll pose that question to the other municipal clients that I work with and see how those, how they are handling that in terms of offering the retiree benefit for health coverage with 30 years of service. And, and Kim, I'll let you know what I, I find out from them in terms of how their policy is set up.
It would be 30 years. I mean, 30 years of, the only thing we can hook up is not necessarily coverage, medical coverage, but TCRF is the only thing that would be common that you'd hook it to for service, is that one that I can see.
Right.
They are, they know that, and saying, well, what are you doing for us?
So we have a meeting scheduled with TCRF to speak about something different. And we do have one employee who left us, who had time with the school as well as here. And because they had time with the school, they got the state insurance when they left. It built into that.
That's what I was just about to, yeah, that's what I was just about to say. Like, what if they were working with another entity that had TCRS available? Because my understanding is that they're serviced in terms of TCRS retirement. That clock continues if they go somewhere else with TCRS benefits.
That's always retirement. So the question is, is what gets the school the ability to continue with the state ins, because they're on the state insurance plan?
And offer the whole, it's not cheap.
No.
They don't have to pay.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll let Carrie work with Kim and maybe come back with what some other folks are doing. Tyler had to jump off. Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
Mayor, really quick, I have to get out here, but to go over our financials for the 263 fund is right now. Revenue this year, 1.5 million, and things at 1.2 million. So we're halfway between November 4 and March, we're 258,049 in plus. So I know we may have some higher, you know, if, not seeing it here, but that's just, which is a good thing. But I have to agree.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Robbie. Anything else? Next meeting, Kim, we're looking at February?
Yeah, probably closer to the end of February.
Okay.
Anybody have a specific day, or? Did you want? Mayor, do you have anything in February that would keep you from attending?
I have no idea. Leanne's on the line.
Your calendar is open for February at this point.
Why don't we say, February the 24th, we'll do a workshop where we discuss everything? Would that be enough time, Carrie?
Yes, I think that should be good.
Do you all have anything on your calendar for a specific time? It would need to be after 10 o'clock in the morning for HR.
No, I think at this point, that part in advance, we would, we're still very open, so we can be very flexible for you.
So what time? What time? Can we do 1:00 PM?
Sounds good.
Do we want to look at the? Do we want to look at the first or second week in March to set a meeting just in case? And discuss other things, in case we want to make a decision on this and moving forward, and we'll need to do that pretty quick, because we'll have to get it into our onboarding system for open enrollment for employees that do want to change, so it would be in March, the first or second week there.
Let's just go ahead and set it up.
Anybody have anything they can't do? So March 11th, would that be okay with everybody? That's on a Thursday. Again, at 1:00 PM work? And that's an official meeting.
Can you tell me again what you said, March?
March the 11th at 1:00 PM.
Okay. I think that should be fine, I was just thinking about spring, spring break schedules for schools, but I don't, I don't think that they're, they would be that early, I think it's usually a little later in March, so that, that should be fine for me.
Okay. Okay. I just got a second. Sorry.
Hey, Kim, I think that, I think that actually is spring break for Loudoun County schools, but again, between myself and Seamus and Nadia, the three of us can work together to make sure that someone is available, so I, I think leave that date as it is, but the three of us will work together to figure out who's available for that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, anything else?
I'm adjourned.
All right, well, we are adjourned unless there's an objection. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, bye-bye.